That's my question.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting, Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. With that, if we have a roll call, please.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstan? Sutherland?
Here.
Yanko?
Here.
McCullough?
Here.
Schwabs?
Here.
Gents? Solberg?
Here.
Schlue?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Summerfeld?
Here.
Okay, thank you. No special recognitions this evening, so approval of minutes. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, Ryland, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, Jeff?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor have said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, there is a public hearing this evening, a proposed zoning ordinance amendment for a nineteen point six-two acre parcel owned by Harmony Parks LLC, adjacent to Eagle Point Road from agricultural to district to general industrial I three district. And Dave Schofield, if you could bring us up to speed on that, we'll start our public hearing.
Yes, this is the property that was recently annexed from the town of Red Cedar. The owner, the prospective buyer, has requested that it be zoned from I to I three. Plan Commission did review this last month, and I'll get into their review in the next agenda item. But we did send out a public hearing notice to all the adjoining property owners, and we published in the newspaper, so there may be here folks here that would like to give you their opinion on the proposed rezoning.
Okay, very good. That being the case, we'll open up the public hearing. It's an opportunity for anybody to come up to the podium, push the microphone button on and speak on this item. So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Last call for the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under public comments, this is the portion where anybody can come up to the podium and speak on agenda items for the evening. Please give us your name and address and do sign in and make sure you push the button on the microphone, so the microphone turns green. At this time, we'll open up the comments.
Hello, all. My name is Jeremiah Jardine, and I'm here today to ask for a resolution of support on our private developer application for a CDI grant, a Community Development Initiative Grant through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation or W E D C. This will be for the use and development of the and rehabilitation of six fourteen Main Street, also known as, or formerly known as, a Lakeside Bar and Grill, which comprises of a vacant derelict two-story building with a commercial space that's vacant and two vacant apartments on the second floor. I see some familiar faces, but many new ones, so a brief background here. My wife and I moved to Menominee in two thousand seventeen, and after settling in for a couple of years, completely and totally fell in love. We came from the cities, but we're not big city people. I grew up in a small town called Sauk City. It's the hometown of Culvers. That's our claim to fame. And for me, Menominee is just a bigger version of that. After being here a couple of years, we decided to invest heavily in the community. We purchased four hundred Main Street, which is the building that houses Simple Sports and six apartments in it. And then went on to buy Daniel Olson's properties a year later. So now we have thirty apartments and twelve commercial spaces, and we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into these buildings over the last couple of years, making these apartments not just places that, yeah, I would live there, but to places that you'd feel proud to live in, you know, tin ceilings, granite countertops, places that you just, you feel a sense of pride. Our goal in doing this was to help change the tenant demographic down here from just being students that live on Main Street to young professionals, to professionals in general, because professionals, they live downtown, they shop downtown, they eat downtown, day in and day out. So our goals really are to help create a vibrant and robust downtown that has, you know, continued staying power. So I ask that you help me continue on this mission and pass a resolution of support to allow us to apply to the Community Development Initiative Grant, which will allow us to rehab that building and pour half a million dollars at least into that building. I'll be available for questions when the item does come up on the agenda, and I thank you for your consideration.
Jeremiah, could I get your address too, please?
Certainly. Jeremiah Jardine, business address or home address?
Home address, please?
N is in North eight four one two five hundred seventy-eighth Street, Colfax, Wisconsin, five four seven three zero. I do have an office down on Third Street, right across from the post office.
Okay, I think that's what we need, and you will be here for questions if we have any. So thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
And again, public comments is open. If anybody would like to come up and speak to the microphone about agenda items for the evening, you can do so at this time.
Good evening. Tammy Simon. My business address is eleven twenty-five North Broadway. I am the tourism manager for the Menominee Area Chamber and Visitor Center, and on your agenda tonight, you'll see a special event packet for lighting Wakanda Park. You may remember that that packet was approved last year for lighting the park. We actually weren't going to do it this year just because of staffing issues, but I had a group of volunteers come forward and express interest in helping us put those up. So that's kind of why we're scrambling at the last minute, trying to get that special event packet passed, so that we can get them up prior to our holiday events that are coming up. So Wakanda Wonderland, Will Skibay Park Parade of Lights, all those things for our community members and our visitors to do when they're here. So I will be here when we get to that point on the agenda. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tammy. Again, public comment is open. If anybody else would like to come up and speak about agenda items for the evening, now is your opportunity to do so.
Hello, everyone. I'm Becca Schoenborn, the Executive Director of Downtown Menominee, twenty-seven twenty-one Nelson Drive. I am here in support of item six G. It is a revitalization project within the Business Improvement District, and Jeremiah and his businesses have proven their investment to our downtown, so I am just here to offer my support of the project and hoping that it gets to move forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Becca. Okay, public comment is still open. If anybody else would like to come speak, and now is your opportunity to do so. Last call for public comment. Okay, well, I don't see anyone else, so I think we'll close public comment and move on with the rest of our meeting. Brings us down to unfinished business five A, which is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for a nineteen point six-two acre parcel owned by Harmony Parks LLC, adjacent to Eagle Point Road from agricultural district to general industrial I three, and I think I'll turn that right over to Dave. You can take it, David?
Yeah, so there's an agenda or there's an ordinance in your packets that would affect this change. That ordinance was introduced at your November sixth meeting. It was reviewed by the Plan Commission on November twenty-seventh and recommended for approval unanimously. One of the items that was brought up at the last meeting was a concern about conservancy on the riverbank. And so in your packet, there is a copy of the CSM that was by the Plan Commission. They did include a conservancy no build area along the riverbank. I think that's, I hope that's addressed the concern that was raised with respect to that. So in the, in the application, they did note a number of things, and the Plan Commission did concur with those, one of which is that we need to have rezonings be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan did show industrial development in this vicinity in the packet, and maybe Megan can go about ten pages on. There's a map that shows a number of circles showing where industrial development is anticipated. And this is an area that was anticipated as industrial development. So believe this is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and Plan Commission did review and recommend approval. So if you're okay with the proposed rezone, you can waive the first reading of the zoning ordinance. You could waive the first and the second, or you could waive the first, second, and adopt the zoning ordinance. Obviously, separate motions for each one of those.
Okay, good. Thank you for that piece of information. And this went through this body and then went to Plan Commission and favorably had their support. So now it's back in your corner. And moving it forward would, like David said, it already has been introduced, so we would have, need a motion to waive the first reading. Jeff?
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Lee? Go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to waive the first reading. All in favor have said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then we'd need a motion to waive the second reading as well. Ryan?
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading.
Okay, motion been made to waive the second reading. Is there a second to that? Chad?
I'll make a motion. I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to waive the second reading. All in favor have said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then we need a motion to adopt. Is there anybody who would make a motion to adopt? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the rezoning of the sixteen, nineteen point six-two acre parcel adjacent to Eagle Point Road from A agriculture to I three general industrial district.
Okay, good motion, Ben. Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second? Go ahead, Eric.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Is there any, or the rezoning, I should say, is there any other discussion? Okay, regular vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Brings us down to six A. Review of the two thousand twenty-four water, wastewater, solid waste, and stormwater utility operating budgets. I'm going to hand this off to Eric.
Ben here in a moment. Yes, so what you have before here on six A are the utility budgets that are presented before you. We have to, we are required to present the utility budgets. They're a little bit different than our general fund budgets, because they are utilities, and then therefore they can also draw revenue on there. And it takes a little bit extra time, too, to be able to analyze the rates comparison with with the rest of our levy in order for us to be able to calculate the budgets, and that's part of the reason why they come a little bit later than the general fund budget. We have the department heads from our various utilities here that are present, along with David Schofield, who also worked very closely with our department heads in those utilities to create the budgets before you, and these budgets are required in order to be passed in order to be able to move forward in two thousand twenty-four. The first budget that's presented in front of you is the two thousand twenty-four water utility budget. I'm going to ask Jeremy to come up to the podium, too, in case you have any questions about his budget.
I guess the only thing I would say, Jeremy, how status quo is this from past year's budgets?
Um, it's higher than past budgets, but we've, with the rate increase, we have projected revenue, and we got projects coming up. So that's why a lot of this, and these are accounts are some worst-case scenarios on a equipment failure, and it, over the years, it doesn't always happen, or we have to replace a well, or those can get very expensive. So in the past, I've just budgeted for it. This year, we are going to do a well replacement at number four. That one is due to be replaced. And at that time, when the plant is down, we want to replace one of the booster pumps as well, which are both very expensive repairs.
Okay, so that's the reason for a lot of the increase, and the rates have also had an increase?
Correct. Yeah. And one thing to remind council, on the rate increase, that was due to an increase that was imposed upon us by the P S C for the state of Wisconsin. So we brought that back to this body before on what that rate increase was when when that began, that process, and then to the conclusion, to the ultimate implementation of it. So although it is an increase, it does allow for us to be able to generate more revenue. That way, it can offset the costs and balance out the budget that's in the water utility. Yes.
I have two more informational, showing my ignorance, questions. I was looking at, I noticed, for example, in the revenues, the public fire revenue, and I didn't see very corresponding amounts from the city. So are those all the communities? Where is that revenue coming from?
Anyone that has fire protection lines, I did, Dave and Jamie would answer this better, because I don't really see this, but other than the size of the line, and that's what they pay for the public fire protection, and if there's a hydrant close by.
Okay, and my second question, which is, I saw this line also in, I saw it in the water treatment expenses. There's a water and sewer expense for both the water utility and the wastewater. Who are we paying that to?
We're paying it to the other utility. So in the case, let's say Jeremy has well number eight at a water treatment plant, he discharges wastewater to the sewer system, and then Paul has to treat it. We charge each other.
Each other. Okay, that's what I was thinking. I was trying, okay.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Send a significant amount of water, Paul, when we're back rushing the filters.
Yeah, we had to get the water from somewhere, and we had to send the water to somewhere, and I was just wondering if we were.
Yep, these utilities are standalone things. Jeremy's is only water, Paul's is only wastewater.
Okay.
And they, the city itself chart is, pays for our water and sewer for this building, for instance.
Right, because the expense line is water and sewer. So I was like, thank you.
And one thing I would like to just point out on this, on the sheet that's on your screen here, the bond payments at the bottom there and the interest expense, that's one line up from that. In future years, as we start getting into well number nine, and we start doing our safe drinking water loan and repayment of that, those numbers will increase. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that those are low in comparison to what we will see in future years.
Okay, any other questions for Jeremy, or David, or Eric, or I? And if somebody wants to make a motion to support this, we could do that at this time. Go ahead, Randy.
I'll make a motion to support the water utility budget.
Okay, Randy Summerfield with a motion. Is there a second to Randy's, Mary? Go ahead, please.
I would second Randy's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstan? Oh, sorry. Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was water. Now we can go into the wastewater budget, and Eric, go ahead, please.
Sure, I'll tee this off here for Paul Stirk, our wastewater superintendent. So just like in Jeremy's water budget, we have to present the wastewater utility, and the wastewater utility is comprised based upon, we want to work that we do inside of the wastewater budget. So you can see the various income and the changes that have taken place over time. Operating revenue is roughly the same, and we have Paul here today that can answer questions about his wastewater treatment plant.
I always have a smart remark on your wastewater treatment plant, but I think you guys are doing phenomenal down there, and I don't see any real, other than, you know, the normal repairs and the upgrades. So it looks to me like the operating expenses are pretty close to the same.
Pretty much, they're a little bit higher. We've got the phase one and phase two projects, added a couple of buildings, more pumps, more equipment, so our electric and gas usage has gone up. There's just some inflationary adjustments. Things just tend to cost more over time, but no, no major expenses.
Doesn't look like any real increases. I was a little bit surprised at how much it costs for electricity to run the plant.
Right, and our chemical costs are going to go up with the new, the new tertiary filters as well. So they're going to go up substantially.
All right, any questions for Paul? And Dave, do you have anything to add to that? No? So if anybody would like to make a motion to support the wastewater utility, now is your opportunity to do so. Lee, go ahead.
I'll make a motion approving the wastewater utilities budget.
Hey, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to solid waste. I know Megan is here this evening, and she's our solid waste expert. She's also going to be starting to write a lot of grants, I understand, for the city, so that's great. So Eric, I'll tee this up for you, and you can take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. So Megan here has done an amazing job writing up our two thousand twenty-four solid waste and recycling budget. With the other department heads and their presentations, she is here to answer questions related to the solid waste and recycling budget. And, and yes, Megan has done a fabulous job for writing grants for the city, and we're all very proud of her efforts, and she's really offset a tremendous amount of costs. She's here to answer questions you have about her solid waste budget.
The only thing, I have a lot of, I get a lot of thank yous and a lot of good job, pat on the backs for our transfer station down there. And it's cost neutral. Actually, it's cost black. And I don't know if we're looking at more things to happen down there or not, but I don't know, does everybody get a chance to go out there and check it out and talk to people that are using it? Because I really get a lot of compliments on, number one, the two compacters, that was a big plus. The blacktop area, that's a big plus. It's clean. It's a clean environment. And I know our operators are super friendly, so I just, it just really makes it a nice environment. Gretchen?
I also really appreciated the online form for getting next year's little placard. It was brilliant.
Okay, see you tonight.
Thank you.
Cool, good, good, good. Okay, any other questions? Any, I guess, any self-explanatory? Oh, Mary?
And I still think that we need coffee out there.
You and everybody else that goes down there.
Yeah, well.
All right, well, we're going to take a cup of coffee, do the, Mary, so you get one Saturday, I'll get another. So there you go. All right, if anybody would like to support this, Jeff, go ahead.
I was just wondering, is it in the near future of fixing that road that leads back to our solid waste?
We do have some money for some asphalt improvements, not enough to do the entire road, but we are looking to do some more patching in addition of some blacktop down there next year as well.
You just gotta slows down. Slow down. Fifty? Oh, fifteen, okay. All right, well, that could be in the future. But anyways, if anybody would like to support this, we could do so with a motion at this time. Yeah, if not, go ahead, Chad.
I like to make a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-four solid waste recycling budget as presented.
Okay, good motion. Ryland, go ahead, please.
I'll second Chad's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moves us on to the stormwater utility operating budget.
Sure. And again, Megan, this is, comes under Megan's purview. She has submitted her two thousand twenty-four stormwater utility budget, and she is here to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to her budget.
I have one. What is an MS four permit?
That's a great question. So it stands for municipal separate storm sewer system permit. It's a permit that some municipalities have based on their population or their population density from the D N R. So we're currently at the very tail end of our five-year permit. We'll have a new permit issued this spring. And there's a variety of requirements that have to be done as far as education, public involvement, illicit discharge prevention, so I need, like, making sure, like, stuff doesn't go down the storm drain that isn't supposed to. Construction site inspections and erosion control ordinances, et cetera. So a lot of city staff touch the stormwater area. There's, it crosses a lot of staff to implement all the requirements of this permit. And as part of that permit, we also have the additional T M D L goals from the D N R for phosphorus and T S S, which we did that project late last year and into this year for modeling and have submitted that to the D N R. We believe that we are meeting those goals, and the D N R is working to review that and concur on that data, that we expect that to be concurred upon sometime in the spring as well.
The other thing I was going to mention, too, is our holding ponds, you know, are different, like the Wakanda, the newest one up at Wakanda, the overflow pond and so forth, the settlement pond. How many do we have within the city Menominee? And you know, do we, do we have a number of ponds of phosphorus or settlement that those are taking? I know the one up in north Menominee, the newest one, Wakanda, if you ever watch it, when there's a huge rainfall, the water is just shooting out, and then it hits the pond, and it settles, and then it creeps down over the hill. Pretty neat.
Yeah, so for city-owned stormwater facilities, we're around thirty retention ponds and different ponds that are municipally owned. And then as far as private facilities in total, there's probably an additional eighty or so that we inspect. So all the public ponds have to be inspected annually, and then from the private side, I have to inspect them once every three years.
I know the Menominee is doing an incredible job with that, and to forward and of the past administration and working with, you know, the T M D L, the total daily maximum loads and all of those things. Menominee is, I think, on the cutting edge of doing a great job for the lake, and the lake is improving, and all these factors factor in. So thank you, Megan. Okay, anything else? Any questions for Megan or otherwise? If anybody would like to support this, they could do so with a motion. Mary?
I would like to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four stormwater utility budget as presented.
Okay, good motion. Is there a second to that motion? Jeff Luther?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yep.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, great. That brings us down to six B, the review of the two thousand twenty-four tax increment district operating budgets, and we can take all these in one motion. But Eric, I'll let you take this from here.
Yeah, I'll tee this off. Thank you, Mayor. So first off, thanks to David Schofield and for Jamie Schindler for their work on helping putting this together, and actually, they're, they're really dedicated work to putting it together. As required, we have our tax increment districts that are active. You will also see numbers on districts for old, old districts that we have that have been since closed out. Those are zeroed out. But the ones that are active have both revenue side and an expenditure side. Some of our new districts that we've created, like seventeen and eighteen, you're not going to be seeing revenue on those sides just yet, but you'll see some expenditures. Those are for different improvements that need to take place additionally into the other active districts that have been around for a while. You'll see both revenues on taxes that are coming in as well as anticipated expenditures that either might be related to the capital fund or for ones that we feel that we may end up working on here over the course of this year. Does anybody have any questions about the tax increment districts that are presented in front of you? And the sheet looks different, because it is part of our current financial software suite, the A C S Financial System. Okay, so the number, thank you, Mayor, that is good. So are the numbers that you're going to want to include in your motion would be tid number twelve, tid thirteen, tid fourteen, tid fifteen, tid sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen?
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, if anybody would like to make a motion to support the tid district and their, their numbers, it'd be a motion to include tids twelve through eighteen, Ben?
Yep, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four tax incremental district operating budgets for tids twelve through eighteen.
Very well said. That's what I meant to say. That's what I meant to say. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to support that now is your opportunity to do so. Chad, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024 budgets for tid twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Very well. Good job. Is there a second to Chad's motion? Go ahead, Laura.
A second Chad's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, we need a roll call, yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us down, brings us down to six C, review of the 2023 construction fund capital budget. Eric?
Yeah, so again, our construction fund budget is related to the borrowing that we did last year. So for 2023 and 2024 borrowing, what we did is we presented our revenue budget worksheet along with expenditures for what we had planned on spending. Now, some of the expenditures ended up that were planned for 2024, we did in 2023. And we did that as, for reasons that came to the council, essentially that we were able to save money by making those expenditures in 2023. So those expenditures that we did not engage in this year that were planned for next year were put into the budget for this, this coming year, 2024. And additionally, for things that we had anticipated making expenditures for in 2023 that we did not do, but were borrowed for, we pushed over into 2024.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Okay, if anybody'd like to make a motion to support this is opportunity to do so. Lee?
Yeah, I'll make a motion approving the 2023, 2024 construction fund budget.
Okay, good motion. Good motion, thank you. Is there a second to Lee's motion? Laura?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to six D, proposed master agreement for professional services with Cedar Corporation. Dave Schofield, I believe that you have this one.
Yeah, so this is a master services agreement. This does not actually spend any money, but it sets up a legal framework for future task orders. This is one of the items is when I came in, I felt like we needed to maybe tighten this up a little bit. And so I've worked with Kevin and Mr. Ludeman and Cedar Corporation's council to try to establish a master services agreement. I think this is a good agreement and I recommend approval. One thing I do want to bring everyone's attention to is in paragraph W of part four, this is not a exclusive agreement, so the city does have the ability to use other consultants when and if it's in our best interest. So that's, that's why this is not something that we need to have a term on or a go through a a search for. This is just setting aside a legal framework for the future contracts.
Sounds like it's a parameter or guidelines document. Very good. Thank you, David. Okay, have any questions? Otherwise, council, if you'd like to support this, we could do so with a motion. Lee?
Can you put kind of in the nutshell what is different about this and what arrangements we've had previously with Cedar? And if you would, Dave, talking to your mic a little bit more, you're
Yeah, sorry. Our contracts thus far talk about scope, fee, and schedule, but there aren't things like, how do we terminate a contract? How do we, what legal framework do we have if there's problems with the the output of that? Can we use those plans for another project, that sort of thing? And so this just kind of sets forth a little bit more of a standard playing field for, for what we will do in the future.
Good question. Thank you, Lee. Okay, so if anybody'd like to support this, you can do so at this time. Gretchen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the master agreement for professional services with Cedar Corporation.
Okay. And is there a second to that motion? Lee, go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to six E. Proposed appointment of Jamie Schindler to the city treasurer's comptroller position. Jamie's here this evening and she can wave her hand. If you have any questions, she is here. This is a very important position for the city of Menominee, as you can imagine. There's a lot of moving pieces. There's a lot going on in that department. Jamie's been with the city a number of years now and has filled a lot of the roles in that department and has now had the opportunity to move into the city treasurer comptroller's position. And I think she'll do a great job. She's already proved herself over the last few months, so I would support this. If anybody else would like to support this with a motion, you could do so at this time. Do you want to say?
Yeah.
I'll have Eric say a few words to.
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude towards Jamie and the work that she has done. She started out originally with us as a manpower employee, as a deputy clerk coming into that office. And then through her time here, she's transitioned into the finance department. It's essentially held every position in the finance department except human resources. During that time, she's proven herself to be a valuable employee and a teammate for everybody here in the city. And she came into a difficult situation here where we've had a fair amount of turmoil. She's, as far as having changeover personnel. We've had, obviously, I'm new in the position that I'm in, David's new in his position. We had people switching out in the finance department too with people as well as other positions in the city. She came in on September fifth as the interim treasurer and has done a great job. I spoke with Heidi Wilson, our former treasurer, who has been working with Jamie, and she says she has stepped up to the task, done a great job. And in fact, in the last month, month and a half, it's been wonderful to work with Jamie, watching her come into her own as a leader into that department, getting people to work together. And then just in the last week about helping with the, with the tax increment district projects and the budgets, the utilities, which she plays a critical role with that, along with our construction fund. I would highly recommend her for this position. I think that she is the right person for it. I am positively excited for her. And I look, I am very much looking forward to working with her in this capacity should you approve her for it. I just think she is the right person for this job. And I'm very pleased the mayor supports this and endorses her.
Thank you, Eric.
You're very welcome.
Gretchen?
I'd like to make a motion confirming Jamie Schindler to the position of a city treasurer comptroller.
Great, that's a good motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second Gretchen's motion.
Okay, Laura with a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jamie. Okay, and let's keep on moving down to six F, proposed easement release for August Lane, CSM discussion and possible action. David Schofield, you can handle this one.
Yeah, so August Lane is approximately a quarter mile southeast of the intersection of State Highway twenty-nine, Midway, and Meadow Hill Drive. Originally, it was plotted, I believe, thirteen lots. Several of those lots have been built on and have been built on since the seventies. There were five lots kind of along the highway that were never built on. And in fact, the right of way serving three of those lots was vacated in nineteen eighty-four. With that vacation, kind of left some strange orphaned easements that, and the developers now propose to purchase that, those, all five of those lots and the outlots and create two buildable lots. And so what they've asked for the city to do is, is release the easements that were essentially following, if you can go to the next two slides on there. So the, the hatched areas, there are utility easements that are unused. There is a utility easement that kind of goes around lot three or old lot three that has to stay because there is a electric facility in that, in that area. But the remainder of them can be released. And so that's what this is on your agenda here tonight for is to approve the release of those easements.
Okay, thank you, David Schofield. Any questions for David? If not, if anybody'd like to entertain a motion, we could do that at this time as well. Yes, Laura? Oh. Chad, if somebody, whoever wants to.
I'd like to make a motion to
Could you use your microphone, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of the existing utility easement adjacent to lots one, two, eleven, and twelve, Meadow Hill Estates.
Very good, good motion, Ben? David? Good, okay. Is there a second to that motion? Laura?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? And a voice for it. Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so that moves us down to the next piece of business, which would be six G. The proposed resolution supporting the submission of an application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Community Development Investment, the CDI Grant Program by TWD Enterprise LLC for six fourteen Main Street. Eric?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So in front of you here today is a proposed resolution to support Jeremiah Jordan's basically economic redevelopment of the old Lakeside Lounge. And the CDI grant allows for matching funds to be awarded to him through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. One of the, one of the ways that you can get that is, or, well, it's one of two ways. And one, either the city makes an application and then a resolution for it and supports it. Or we have a developer that makes the application and submits for the grant, but then as a requirement of that particular grant would require the city then to endorse it through a resolution. Now, as far as the grants, we, we haven't had too many applications here in the last handful of years. And if memory serves me right, I believe the last group that's applied for that would be the Menominee Market Co-op to kind of give you a timeframe of it. Only one grant can be issued per, per year. The closing date on this particular grant application is December fifteenth. Jeremiah has stepped forward with his investment group to make the redevelopment. And after reviewing this redevelopment with Jeremiah and his proposal, city staff strongly endorses or strongly recommends approval of this resolution to redevelop that property. One of the goals is to be able to renovate the lower floor and to put in a commercial kitchen, so that way we can attract a restaurant and then renovate the top floors, the apartments, so that way we can attract people to want to live there. And so Jeremiah here, of course, is here to answer any kind of questions if you have it, if you want to suspend the rules. What this application, I think, is a very good application. I've spoken to Ray French from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. It's a, it's a very viable project and one I think that can help improve our downtown business improvement and historic district.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, we can, go ahead, Gretchen.
Make a motion to waive the rules?
Sure.
To allow him to speak.
Okay, motion been made to waive the rules. Is there a second to Gretchen's motion? Ryland?
I'll second Gretchen's motion.
Motion been made and seconded to waive the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hi, Jeremiah. There's probably a few questions that we'd like to ask you, and I'll start with Gretchen.
So I'm excited about this. I live on this side of town, so I'm curious about parking, and I saw a lot of references to, you know, walking travel, but the realities of Menominee is that folks coming into town also would need a place to park. And is that lot right next to the building part of this project or is that separate? Because I believe that was the business behind that worked on that parking lot?
Yes, so that parking lot is part of Olson Funeral Homes. However, this building does have five or four parking spaces that come with it with the additional ability to build out an extra space there. I do have an arrangement with Ryan Olson where in the event that there's not an ongoing funeral, patrons would be able to park in that spot. Also have good relationships with the owners of the BMO Bank Building where there's excess parking, so arrangements can and will be made.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you. Is there any more questions? Yeah, Lee, go ahead.
I wonder about the twin building next to it. Well, do you own that or what would happen if you're going through your plans and that keeps looking like it looks? It's, it isn't the most attractive situation.
Yes, very valid point. I do not own that building. I have spoke with Dave and Barbara Stang who own it. At this point in time, they're not interested in selling, but I did share the plan and the vision with them. And I said, Dave, at minimum, can I get you numbers to repaint the face of that building along with the side? And he said, very much, they would be very glad to have those numbers. And we can lower total costs by doing them both at the same time, because yes, certainly that could use a little TLC as well.
Okay, thank you. So I have just a quick question. So you're, you're, you're talking about a restaurant possibility and living quarters upstairs. What, what type of a restaurant are you thinking? You know, is there a, is it a sub shop or is it a high-end restaurant? You're going to have your own kitchen? Give us just a thirty-second overview.
Well, just looking at the what's happening in around Menominee, I think the most successful restaurant would be a KFC.
Okay. Motion granted.
But in all seriousness, you know, when my wife and I moved here, we had Zan's Bar in town, right? And, and I think, I think all of us miss that, right? We have, our bars have excellent food downtown. But it'd be really great if we could go out to eat in the downtown Menominee area and have options besides, you know, burger joint or a pizza joint, which is effectively what we have right now. So, you know, my idea are, and I'm not a restaurateur. I like to cook at home. I enjoy, you know, hosting, but I'm not a restaurateur. So my goal is to find a good restaurateur who wants to come to the area and, and, and bring it, bring their creation here. You know, I've had conversations with the folks over at Pier Five Hundred and Hudson. I keep plastering Pete, Pete over at San Pedro and Pedro del State in Hudson. Man, I would love to bring them downtown. I've had good conversations with the owner of Ice House in, in Minneapolis, where again, it's, it's plates that are American-inspired but are, you know, maybe elevated a little bit, but yet still reasonably priced. You know, they're not all forty-dollar plates, right? They're attainable for the average, average Menominee.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Eric, go ahead, please.
Randy, this may be for the city, but I guess I want to have a question as far as liquor license. Is there one attached to this property or assigned to this? And if not, do you intend on maybe having alcoholic beverages at this establishment? So there's not a liquor license?
Not assigned to that property.
Yeah, no liquor license assigned to it right now. Any endeavor that I, you know, I think Menominee has enough college bars, right? So I think we can, any, I, I think it's challenging for a restaurant to make it without a liquor license as well. But, you know, again, I'm not going to be the operator of the restaurant. My goal is to recruit somebody to come and run and operate that. But my, my goal, my stipulation would be that, you know, I imagine the cities would be similar, that fifty percent or more of the sales have to be coming from food so that we don't just open another, you know, dive college bar.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, you know, hamstring you at all. I just, I was just more concerned if it was already established, but it's not.
There is no liquor license assigned to that specific property.
Very good, thank you, Randy.
Okay, Gretchen?
So I was reading, it's the WDC application and private funds. I'm curious about any future, and may not be a question for you, but any potential future public funds that might be needed? Would there be any attributed to this project?
Yeah, I feel like I can answer that. So there is a plan for myself and Jeremiah meet, excuse me, in January. And we're going to discuss a potential development agreement for tax increment financing as he is in District Number Fifteen. So there may be a possibility with that. Depending on other kind of work that he may want to do with that building in the future too, there may be a possibility to expand on that. But, but I would anticipate us coming back to council at some point and having a conversation based on our conversation that we have.
Okay, so if we'd like to support this, go ahead, Chad, go ahead.
I got a couple of questions. Where, where is this grant money coming from exactly?
The Wisconsin Economic Development Fund?
What is that? I don't know what that is.
So the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is a So the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is a quasi-governmental corporation that was established by the state of Wisconsin a handful of years ago. And the purpose of this group was is to try to generate economic development in the state by providing access to entrepreneurs and developers, grants to help assist them with their funding projects as well as low-interest type loans. So that way they can try to compete and build up the, build up essentially our economic capacity in communities. So that Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is, is a valuable and useful tool for us, because when we do have developers or builders that are looking to come into the community, we can help connect them with, with that particular group. And then they also help facilitate them acquiring grants and loans and other things like that. So that's what the WEDC is about.
All right, thank you. And I love, what, I don't know what, there's no like rendering in here and what you plan on doing to the outside, but what you did with Simple Sports with that glass, I think that's beautiful. I'm just curious if, do you have, there's no rendering here, but like, what do you, what's your plan for the exterior, I guess?
Yeah, certainly. And I wish I could take credit for Simple Sports. It was actually Bob Grunvig, who had done that renovation, but that is truly the, the inspiration for this. So we'll have a two-foot knee wall and then a twelve feet of, or ten feet of glass above that knee wall on the, on the whole front building, on the front of the building. Then we'll replace all the windows to modernize it, paint the brick.
Anything on the, would be the west side? Let's all brick all the way through there. Would there be anything on that?
Yeah, we'll be replacing the windows and then we'll be painting the brick and we'll get it prepped so that we can do a mural on that wall when the Waldo events comes through.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jeff?
Hey, just to get everybody on the same page and understanding of what Jeremiah, Jeremiah, right? Yeah, Jeremiah is doing with this building. You are the building. You want to get the grant to remodel it, fix it all up. You are going, yourself not going to open a restaurant. You're going to get somebody interested in leasing a space. How do you, are, you're going to have this building ready for a restaurant before you know what type of restaurant is going to come in there, or?
So the goal is to gray box it, right? Get, get everything prepped effectively for a restaurant so that we, we can recruit some, the goal isn't to have every piece of restaurant equipment in there before they come, right? Because you can't, yeah, I don't have a crystal ball for that. But it is to get the interior of the space prepped and, and ready for somebody.
You'll own it, lease it to a restaurant, and then the upstairs, turning those into two apartments?
Yes, there are two apartments there now. We want to just renovate them.
Okay, thank you.
There's wood paneling in the walls, probably remove that.
Okay, any other questions, Gretchen?
One more. Saw the word sustainable. What does that mean to you?
So there are some federal government programs that we're looking to try to tap into as well that are federal sustainable projects. So with that, it just means energy, you know, energy efficient appliances, energy efficient HVAC systems, utilizing heat pumps where we can, et cetera.
Any passive solar on the roof or anything that could, since you, you're, I mean, the, the glass is on the north side, so that's not going to be help, it'll be helpful for glare, so you won't have to deal with patrons having glare. But as far as heating and whatnot, anything like that?
Nothing that's currently as part of our development, but it is something that we're keeping an eye on as these grant programs for the sustainable and environmental funds and programs. They've earmarked funds for it, but they haven't outlined specifically what those, you know, the parameters are on those programs. But certainly something that we're keeping a keen eye on because, you know, it makes, it only makes sense, right?
Right, especially at that price point, it's going to be attracting people if it has more modern sustainability.
Absolutely.
Okay, Jeff Luther?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to support the submission of the application to Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant.
Hey, good motion. Good motion, Mary.
I will second Jeff's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Yes, Mary.
Jeremiah, I just want to thank you for your interest in your already, what you've already done for our downtown. You know, we can all say what should be down there, but very few of us have the wherewithal to actually make it happen. So this sounds very exciting to me, and I, I hope you're successful in it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, so by this time next year, we'll see a bright, shiny new building down there and stuff. So it's been an eyesore for a while. I kind of hoped Olson's Funeral Home would have bought it and tore that one down, too, but it's a good thing that you bought it and you're going to do something with it. Thank you.
All right, good deal. Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. So all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations, Jeremiah. Thank you for being here this evening. Under six H, special event request from Menominee Area Chamber and Visitors Center for a community light show in Wakanda Park. I know we, this is something that's really cool for Menominee. I know we struggle sometimes about getting the lights down. I know I struggled last year on getting the lights down. The weather wasn't very nice in the, after the season. So, but I know that's one concern that maybe making sure that the lights do come down. And I think it's a added plus for the community otherwise. So I think that would be my only concern. And I know I struggle with it on my behalf on the lights that we do put up. So but Tammy is here, if she, if we have any questions, otherwise I think it's a great idea. If anybody'd like to support this, we could do so with a motion. Chad, go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three special event permit for the Wakanda Parade of Lights.
Great, good motion. Is there a second to this motion? Lee?
Second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a couple of budget transfers this evening. Eric, I'll let you do that one, sure.
Absolutely. So we have a budget transfer from the Information Technology Department. And they are looking to move some money out of their schools and conferences that they don't plan on expending this year. And then transfer that into office equipment maintenance to cover a contract for some network and server monitoring software, so that's three hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have a request from the fire department, which is looking to move some money from their commuter programs account into their fire prevention material account. They have a demonstration unit that's twelve years old, a Bullock's fire extinguisher. I really have no idea what that is. And if I tried to explain it, it would sound terrible. We do have the fire chief here to share or to answer any question that you might have with it. What I do know is he does have money in his account that he is not going to be using. He would like to move seventy-five hundred dollars to replace that, that device. And those are the two budget transfers in front of you. He also attached a quote for the Bullock system.
Lee?
Make a motion to approve both budget transfers requested as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Go ahead, Laura.
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mary?
Can we have the fire chief come up and tell us what a Bullock's fire extender, you know, what I mean?
See, that's, that's why I struggled, Mary. So I didn't even try.
So it's a fire extinguisher demonstration unit that we got through a grant twelve years ago or, or better. It uses a sensor system where you physically use a fire extinguisher. And where you place the water, the, the fire will go down. We use propane to fuel it instead of, if anybody remembers the old system that we had, we actually had a burn barrel with diesel and gas that we would mix up and Dick Camp would supply us with fire extinguishers. And there was fire extinguisher powder everywhere. But we train several thousand people in town every year, either at stout or businesses or special groups. And we haven't been able to do it. The system went down in January, February of this year. So we haven't, we spent a whole year trying to find funds for this. And we got to the end of the year now, and we've got the money to, to get this back up and operational. And we had a lot of requests for it, and it's something that we don't charge for. I think it's a good community service that we do. So we'd like to get this taken care of and get it back up and going, so.
Great, thank you, Fire Chief. Any other questions? Otherwise, if anybody'd like to support this, what we do, we have a motion on the floor and a second. So then we need a roll call vote.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Okay, that, great. Thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report. Couple of little things. The, don't forget, on Thursday evening was the, the Winter Days Parade downtown. You can go sit on Santa Claus's lap at four o'clock. And the parade kicks off, I think it's four to six, and then parade kicks off at six thirty. Lasts about an hour, a little more. So bring your whole family down. It's going to be, weather's going to be warm. It's going to be a beautiful evening to be out and about. Couple of other little things, too. That's this Thursday, by the way. The lights were turned on at Wolfski's Bay. I don't know if anybody's had, I've had a lot of compliments. Looking good down there at Wolfski's Bay. And so that's a lot of fun. I can't remember the date for, and Tammy's here, she would know, the date for the Raspac Museum lighting. Do you know? This Saturday? So this Saturday, the lights will be turned on at the Raspac Museum. So be sure to stop by there and check that out. A lot of fun things happening around Menominee. I think that's what I had, but I think you had a number of things, Eric.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Real quick, I want to point out a clarification that's made, and I want to thank Ms. Schindler for doing this today, too. So when we're putting together our budgets and reviewing our statements of assessments, we were made aware that our statement of assessment had been changed from the number that was originally presented to you when we passed our mill rate. What was presented in front of you when we passed our mill rate was essentially a assessed value of one billion, two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars, four hundred and five thousand seven hundred dollars. Found out there was an amendment to that statement of assessment, which put our assessed value at one billion, two hundred and seventy-seven million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, which is a sixteen thousand dollar difference less than what was presented. Recalculated the, the mill rates, the mill rates for everything all stayed the same. So I, I apologize for that. We weren't made aware of that change. I thank Ms. Schindler for finding that today and then bringing that to our attention. And I want to make sure to get that to all of you, too, just for the point of accuracy. And then we have a couple of other things, too. Right now, we're working on a new lease agreement with the Christmas Miracle LLC. So that's the, the group that has the hockey rink, that's kitty corner from the library. So we're going to be looking at redoing that lease and then also making improvements to that area for both winter activities and then for summer activities, so that way we can have some events down there during the summertime. Next thing, city administration staff, we're finalizing the enterprise solution selection to bring in front of you for December eighteenth. So very excited to bring that information forward to council. Additionally, on that eighteenth, we're looking to have our city liability insurance brought forward, too, with a couple selections that we have shown that are frankly going to be able to save you some money. So you have a choice as to what you would like to do. And then also, we're still continuing the reviewing process for the employee handbook with possible changes. We're hoping to have that ready for you also by the December eighteenth. But that may be cutting it tight. So at the latest, we'd be looking at January. And again, that's part of our review process where we take a look at that handbook every two years. And this year, it's up for review. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm going to turn some over to Dave Schofield, too. I want him to mention a little bit about our affordable housing project that we've got coming up. And then hopefully we can put a presentation together for the council. But David Schofield, go ahead, please.
Yeah, we'll be issuing a request for a statement of qualifications for developers for the small home village. Probably your second meeting in, in January will be selecting the developer for that property. So just wanted to let you folks know that that's coming. If you have any questions on the project, I can, you can certainly reach out to me and I can kind of show you a, an artist's rendering, myself being the artist, so. And kind of what we're looking at, but it's the property to the south of Anderson Windows in the, in Back Park. The County Highway B Utility Project is complete. Stout Construction and Cedar Corp. did a nice job on it. The Lindstrom Equipment is now drinking our water and sending us their wastewater. So that's always a good, always a good thing. I think there was a couple of items, Mayor, for the January meetings that you were going to cover.
Yes, do we have the dates down for the January meetings? I failed to mention that. If you could touch on that, Dave, I don't have my cheat sheet in front of me.
So our, our, in January, we have the first and the fifteenth, there are two regularly scheduled meetings. Those are both federal holidays. And so we proposed to move it to the eighth and the twenty-second for council. So down one week, and then Plan Commission would be the twenty-ninth. So I wanted to run that by you folks and see if that was, didn't have anyone that had a, a major conflict with that.
And just a gentle nod on that, just so that we all know that you all know that that's the dates. Our next meeting here will be December eighteenth here at City Hall. So the other thing is Paul Peltier has officially resigned or retired from Plan Commission after nineteen years, I believe it was. And I'll be operating as chair for the time being in that capacity. So. But congratulations, Paul Peltier. He did a wonderful job for a long extended time. So thank you, Paul Peltier. Anything else, David, Megan? Eric? Council, Communications, Jeff, go ahead, please.
Yeah, as soon as Eric mentioned the skating rink down there by the library. Yeah, once the weather cooperates, so we can get it flooded. Jake bought a Zamboni over the summer, and it's in the paint shop right now, getting painted red and green. So the ice quality down there this year in that rain, once it gets going, will be phenomenal. It will be just like our indoor one down in Rec Park.
Yeah, get past these forty-degree days, we'll be in good shape. So, all right, any other communications from council? Okay, we're going to keep moving then. All right. That brings us down to claims. If we would like to pay the bills, Mayor, go ahead, please. Amanda, a revised list?
I would make a motion to pay the bills on the revised list dated twelve-four.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Chad, go ahead, please.
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Thank you, and that brings us down to licenses. If anybody'd like to make a motion to pass the licenses, now is your opportunity to do so. Mary?
I would make a motion to pass the, the Class B beer license as requested from Stout Hockey.
Temporary Class B?
Temporary Class B.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mary's motion? Randy?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we do have a problem this evening because Cody isn't here to adjourn. So we may have to stay after. Jeff Luther?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion been made. Is there a second to that motion, Ryland?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.